All right, we have the recording underway. Please proceed, Mayor.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, everyone, for attending and being on here. I'm genuinely looking forward to this. I would love to be doing this in person, as I'm sure all of us would be, but we're in COVID times, so what we're we're doing it on Zoom, so please bear with us as we as we test it out, but I think I think this is a good format to try this out, so. I'm going to try and talk as little as possible initially until we're answering some questions, so I'm just going to kind of go around and I will I'll just introduce each council member if you just want to tell us how long you've been a council member for and what you love about Camas, something that you know you enjoy about Camas. So we'll start with you, Councilmember Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor. Greg Anderson, Ward Three, which is the western southwestern portion of the city. Twenty-three years and counting on council, appointed in February nineteen ninety-seven. My favorite things about Camas are the people that care about our community, our schools, they care about our downtown, and they care about our employers and how we all work together.
Thank you, Greg. I graduated in high school in nineteen ninety-seven, by the way. Well, Councilmember Carter?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Carter. We've lived here since May of two thousand and two. I was appointed to the council in at the end of January of two thousand and fifteen, so my first meetings were in February of that year. And I represent Ward Two. One of the greatest things I love about our community is our hometown feel, and I have to explain what that means because hometown feeling means to me is that people greet each other on the streets, welcome people, smile, make eye contact, and I just love that about Camas.
Thank you, Bonnie. Councilmember Smith, move on to you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. My name is Melissa Smith. I am a native Camisonian, born and raised. I have been I was appointed to council in March of two thousand and fourteen. And what I love about it, obviously, I've lived here all my life. I can't think of another place to live. It's just such a lovely area to live in, and the people are great, and I just love the community and the open space and everything we have here.
Love it. Thank you, Melissa. Councilmember Roberts? And you're on mute there, Shannon, sorry. Sorry, Shannon, you're on you're on mute.
Mute. Got it. I did that last time. You think I learned? Anyway, my name is Shannon Roberts. I've lived in Camas five years now. I was elected to council last year, November, and my first meetings were in December. I the things I love about Camas. I took Mayor's word literally, so I've got ten things I love about Camas. Small town, outdoor activities, scenery, lakes, safe, and caring, friendly people. I've never lived in a community that is quite like Camas, and I really enjoy it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Shannon. Councilmember Hogan?
My name is Steve Hogan. I've been in Camas for twenty-six years. I grew up in Seattle, Washington, where they're right in the area where they're having their problems right now. What I like about Camas is that the city has been planned. And it reflects it. It's so much better than Seattle and even areas of Belleville. You have more thought that went into the community, lots of trails and good school system and sidewalks that you can walk on and be safe. So those are some of the things I love about the city.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Chaney, and thank you for making it today. I know that you had to do some changes, but it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Don Chaney. I serve as the council member at large, and I have done so for the last twelve years. I'm in my thirteenth year. Just got reelected this last election. I've lived in Camas for forty-seven years, since nineteen seventy-three. I was hired on as a police officer. And I came to, sorry, Mayor, I'm going to take a little longer on this, but I came to this town that when I grew up just west of here, I thought, oh, I'd ever want to live in Camas. It stinks. So let me tell you, Camas is beautiful. It's a gorgeous community. I'm committed to living here. My family lives here. The things I like best about it are that it's beautiful, it's safe and secure, and as Bonnie Carter said, it has that hometown feeling that I don't I don't know where I could go to find a better community than we have in Camas. That's that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Councilmember Burton?
I'll say lively conversation, lovely lakes, friendly faces, and committed, caring community.
Thank you. And how long have you been on the on the council?
Eighteen months, eighteen months. Been lived here since ninety-seven, and like Steve, I grew up in Seattle, and I'm glad I live here instead.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ellen. And then we also have the department heads. We're not going to go through everyone, but we just have them on there as well, just if there's some more specific questions or things they can help us out with, they will be there for support. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to you, Heather. If you want to start. If people have questions, if you want to explain the setup, Heather, and then we'll kind of go through some of the questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, for those of us that might just be joining, or for those of you that might just be joining us, if you would like to speak, you can use the raise hand icon on the Zoom app or star eight if you are dialing in. I do see that so far we do have one person with their hand raised, and one of the things that we discussed is because there's so many folks in attendance and a lot of subjects and topics to cover, we're going to do our best to try to give everyone an opportunity to speak. And so maybe if someone new is raising their hand, we might go to them next and give as many people an opportunity. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute Judith, just a moment, please.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Judith.
Hello. Hey, good evening. Big shout out and thank you for the city for releasing today a video about the algae bloom problems in Lackamas Lake system. I was so excited to see that video and listen to all that informative information. I strongly recommend it to everyone who's watching right now to go to either the city's website and watch the video or go to their YouTube channel and watch it through that. I would like to thank Councilmember Steve Hogan for taking the lead in the lake issue. Steve is a great resource, wealth of knowledge, and the passionate, very passionate with a clear vision and the man with the mission. So thank you, Steve, so much. And would like to also thank Steve Wall and Jerry Atchison for all the invisible behind-the-scenes work, countless meetings and correspondences that they poured into me and other parts of this lake lake issue and all the other council members who have been showing interest for our lakes. A special thank you for Mayor McDonnell for taking interest and moving the lake up on the priority list even during these turbulent times. A few things I would like to add to that YouTube video. One is that I think it's important to know that the city only owns Fallen Leaf Lake, not the other two lakes. They share ownerships, ownership on those two lakes, Lackamas and Round Lake. Not only the city owns some property around the lake, but also the state and the county owns part of the lakes. So it is a very complex issue, and it will take a lot of cooperation between the different political entities and agencies. What Steve Hogan said in the video, that we can use all the help we can get, and it's going to take a lot of work, and it will take a long time, those are all those all should be emphasized. It could take up to twenty years to to fix this issue. And it's also important to keep in mind that whatever we choose to do with the lakes will have an impact on the Lackamas Creek, the creek that Lackamas Lake flows into parts of Osho River and Columbia River's ecology as well. So it is very important to keep those in mind, that we will have an impact in those lakes and creeks as well. Another important part for this issue is to understand that this type of lake will never have a crystal-clear water like mountain lakes do, but it should it should be safe to swim in and enjoyable for recreation along the road. Would like to grab this opportunity to invite in anyone and everyone who's interested interested to become the part of the solution. There is a join, there is a group that is still in forming phase. The email address is camaslakes@gmail.com, or if someone is interested joining and feels more comfortable going through the city, I'm pretty sure Congress or Councilmember Steve Hogan can direct them to towards the group. For now, the group is looking for lake experts, scientists, researchers, analysts. Later on, I'm sure we're going to be need people who are good at lobbying, fundraising, social media, robotic teams, engineers for designing possible solutions, and any and all lake enthusiasts. I do have a couple of questions, though. I would like to know, how did the meeting go with Clark County Council today? That's my first question. Did the did it move forward? I understand that there is a Wednesday meeting as well. And I would like to know how our citizens will know about the outcomes of these meetings. And then my last question is if if there is still a discussion about recategorizing our lakes as recreational, and how will that help with the cleanup process? Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Judith, for those questions. And again, thank you, Steve Hogan, as well. He's been a great resource, and as Judith, you mentioned, there's a lot of shared identities that we have to kind of bring together, and that was part of the call that you were referencing with the county that we had last week. And the call last week went very well. They were bringing before to their team today to discuss it and then to the council next Wednesday. I do not have an update on on anything. I don't know, Steve, if you have followed up or heard any feedback from that around that specific call?
Actually, very, they misinformed us on that call. The meeting is tomorrow, and and then their full council meeting is on Wednesday. I did get a note from Gary Medve that said that it appears that things are moving ahead fairly smoothly, and there seems to be a lot of support. So those were the only feedbacks I had today, but it'll be tomorrow and Wednesday when we find out formally.
Excellent. And was there a second part to that question? I'm sorry. Judith or Steve, did you catch the second part of the question?
Yeah, the recreational part. And we have declared that it's a recreational facility with the county, and that's important for all the people that are on this video with us or this town hall. It was not designated by the Health Department as a recreational lake, and as soon as they said that, Steve Wall and Jerry Atchison jumped on it, and we we made sure it was re-designated as a recreational lake. Don't know why they would not have had it that way for the last twenty years, but it's taken care of now.
Excellent. Heather, I'll go back to you.
All right. Next, we have Jerilyn.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Jerilyn. How are you?
My apologies. It was asked by council if when you come online, if you could pronounce your first and last name and provide the address where you live, just so they have a frame of reference. So my apologies for not speaking up sooner.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jerilyn Holland, and I live at twenty-five thirty-five Northwest Ogden. And I think it's important our city sends a message to our citizens that we recognize our civic responsibility to our national and regional problem. And to be an example for other cities, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to adopt all eight can't wait reforms, given they are supported by a bipartisan task force and are data-driven, research-based reforms that have been proven effective? And can you prioritize hold, control holds that don't restrict blood flow to the neck and head while banning those that do, like vascularness restraints chokeholds that we currently allow?
Absolutely. Great question. So when it comes to the eight can't wait, these are eight policies that when they researched and Mitch, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, the hundred police agencies have found that these eight policies significantly reduce the amount of incidences you have or deaths that you have. One of the things that myself and Chief Lackey have done is, or I've signed the Obama's pledge to review eight of these eight policies. I have gone through them, and again, as Jerilyn, you point out, we are not in compliance with the, when I say not in compliance, we currently do allow those neck restraints or the V and or chokeholds is what they call them in in that. I think it's very important for me to fully understand all aspects of it. So currently, I'm going through the process. I've reviewed a lot with with the chief. I've talked a lot with the police officers as well to try and understand all of these policies. I'm continuing to to have sit down with with other individuals as well as we figure this out. And I anticipate in the next week, I'm going to be coming back with both myself and the chief following up from what we learned from that and what some of those changes are going to be. So I think for me, the process is important that we go through, and I fully understand everything and all the decisions that we're making. And at that point, then, I'm going to come back, just as it has in the pledge, and and let you know what changes we're making. And and at that point, I'll be happy to discuss it in more detail if there's issues as far as what we are working on. Does that can answer your question? Your question, Jerilyn?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for your for your call and and thank you for sending me. You've sent me a lot of good information, which I appreciate as well.
Thank you so much.
Heather, we'll go back to you.
I don't see any hands currently raised, so if someone else would like to speak, otherwise, we can refer to some of the emailed questions. Oh, we have somebody that just put a hand up. Tammy?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, Tammy.
Okay, great. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Tammy Herdner, and I live at fifty-two hundred Northeast two hundred and sixty-ninth Avenue in Camas. And thank you for having the town hall and being so accessible to all of us during these COVID times. I'm my question is a little bit of a follow-up to Jerilyn and to the previous speaker. I used to work for a city in Oregon, and I'm familiar with the use of city committees and and how the council can create an official city committee, and I would be so grateful if the council would consider creating a city equity committee, an official committee. There are a number of cities throughout Washington State, Oregon, and really throughout the country who have similar types of committees that look at equity issues kind of at all different levels of the city, whether that's in hiring practices. You know, how the city celebrates with the citizens, access to parks and recreation, making sure that that's an equitable practice. And also, you know, of course, could help with, you know, partnering with the police department and public safety issues. I would be happy to help with that and definitely don't need an answer tonight, but I would just love for the council and the mayor to consider such a committee.
Thank you, Tammy. And then I think if you have information or there's, you know, other similar kind of events, please forward that on to the council myself as well.
Sure, I'll definitely email the council and you. I have some model charters that other cities in Washington have used to create their equity committees. Really, it's honestly just seems like such a positive addition to any city government. And we can cater it to what the needs of Camas are, but it just seems like a great idea to me. So I will follow it, I will forward that all on to you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Tammy. And then any councilmembers, do you ever want to jump in? Just give us a wave or something. I can can let you in there, but Heather, how are we doing there? Any other hands up?
I don't see any. Oh, yes, they are starting to go up now. All right, we have Deanna.
All right, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Hi, it's Deanna Rush. Hi, friends. Twelve thirty-eight Northwest Benton Street in Camas, and I am speaking today as an individual, but also will mention that I am on the board for the DCA. But just wanted to thank you guys and also impress upon you all the importance of continuing to maintain and water the flower baskets in downtown Camas. This is something I'm very passionate about. I spend personal dollars sponsoring these baskets every year, as I know many of our citizens do, and it's an investment that they make in the downtown community. I also know that all of our merchants love the ambiance it creates, especially in the summer months. I know things are tough right now, and I know that they're still getting watered, so whatever's happening is happening, but I just wanted to let you all know that it's something that people get really excited about. And you know, everyone spends varying levels of time downtown. I'm down there almost every single day, and it's 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 just a piece of downtown that I don't think we can let slide. So I really appreciate your guys' attention to that. And if anyone ever has any questions about my love for flower baskets, just give me a call.
Thank you, Deanna. Yeah, the DCA, you guys all do a tremendous job down there, and it just adds another level of energy and life to the whole downtown. So thank you. I don't know if that was, was there a question there or was just more of a? Or Steve? Steve Wall or Steve Hogan?
I think Deanna was interested in having the water, the flower baskets continue to be watered throughout the summer. And I believe if Mr. Wall is on, he can answer.
Yeah, happy to provide an update there. We have somebody on board now for the rest of the summer here through Labor Day to help water the baskets. So we are continuing to move forward with that work.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
We'll throw it back to you.
Certainly. We have Charity, just a moment.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Charity.
Charity Fab, one four zero one Northwest Seventh Avenue. I've lived in Camas for about ten years. And one, I'm excited to hear everything that is being talked about tonight. It's an awesome time to tune in. But also, what I want to ask, more like suggest, is with COVID and the crazy amount of misinformation and all the things that are affected from the food chain to small businesses to everything, really. I was going to ask what sources you all have or are seeking out for good information on COVID transmissibility and lasting effects and all that, but instead of asking and putting putting you on the spot, I just want to suggest that that you all be seeking out information on it because there's a lot that's not being reported in the mainstream media. We haven't been tested, but we are positive. My little family had it from March tenth to like April twenty-fourth. And it's just, it's really affected. I know it's affected all of us, but I have this vibe that it's like, okay, it's passed through, and now it's gone, and we're on the upswing. And I'm just hoping that there are people in charge who are not just sitting back and going, okay, Camas is cool. That's really all I wanted to say.
No, I mean, I think from my standpoint, I am, it's concerning across the board, and because it is so unknown what we're kind of dealing with. And I think there was a few, where do we get our information and and you know, how are we dealing with it? I think there's there's two aspects, I think, to the COVID and Chief Lackey may need to jump in to help me to make sure I'm explaining it correctly, but there's one is the, from a business standpoint, and that's more of the L and I or the labor and industries process, so that's where from a the mandate as far as businesses or the or the city goes, that's where we're getting our guidance from. And the second aspect of that is the Governor Inslee's new order around masks, and and that's a separate one in itself as well. But again, I'm looking to Melnick from a county standpoint, and then from the state standpoint, the leadership there and kind of directing us and understanding what the steps that we need to take and to protect the community as a whole. Chief Lackey, anything on that or?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor, especially with your local guidance from the Clark County Public Health Department, and Dr. Melnick's not only connected to the State Department of Public Health, but a lot of the information's coming right from the CDC.
Thank you, Chief Lackey. I'm sorry, was it Tammy? Is that who it was? Heather?
Charity.
No, that was.
I'm sorry, Charity. Charity, does that answer your question or?
Hang on a second.
There. It does. I just want to suggest one name in case anyone is interested in following somebody who's really trying to equip local governments, and that would be Andy Slavitt, S-L-A-V-I-T-T. And thanks for taking my question.
Thank you, Charity.
Okay. Next, we have Annie.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
We can, Annie. How are you?
Okay. Hi, I'm good. I'm Annie Colvin. I am a Camas resident. I just graduated from CHS this past year, actually.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I live at thirty-two fifty Northwest Twentieth Circle, but what I wanted to discuss today originally was the eight can't wait reforms, but I also wanted to address like issues within the high school. So while the my past four years at CHS have been a great experience. Throughout these four years, I've also seen a tremendous amount of racism, homophobia, and sexual assault cases within the school that I've gone unnoticed or there's no action taken. And I wanted to discuss how how we can address these issues because I feel that often enough students are the ones who are forced to address them and take action as opposed to the school and the administration taking action. So one of my thoughts was if we had an equity counselor within the high school who can directly discuss with students and take charge specifically on accounts of sexual assault, racism, homophobia, et cetera, and what your guys' thoughts would be on this.
All right. Thank you, Annie. And Bonnie, I might refer to you as well, just from the school standpoint, because you may be able to give more insights into that specifically. But I think in regards to you know, again, you referenced that the rape racism and the homophobia, you know, that you've seen in the schools there, and you know, obviously, that's concerning anywhere in the community that we have these ones. And I think the I think the the conversation is really the answer to a lot of this is we have to have some open dialogue, and we have to be able to discuss it, and we have to be able to discuss it with other people as well. And I think that can be challenging, but I do feel, and as you kind of alluded to, you know, the high school, this generation is is a lot more, it's it's different. They're a lot more vocal, you know, I mean, there's there's a change in the air as well, and I think the fact that we are talking about it is fabulous, and that's part of part of the solution. But I think specifically around the Equity Counselor, Bonnie, did you want to, maybe, do you have some insight in regards to that or?
Well, Annie, congratulations on graduation. That's a great accomplishment. I don't know if you went through Sky Ridge, but you would have been in in the eighth grade when I start, or seventh grade when I started working at Sky Ridge. So that's why Mayor is asking for my input.
So that's why Mayor is asking for my input.
Sort of explain that there as well.
That's okay.
The school district.
I do know that the school district has a equity team, and it's been in the works for the last three plus years. They've been doing great, great work with staff. I think you're, you're right on task right there with getting an equity counselor, specifically an equity counselor. I know you have counselors at the high schools, but an equity, and they've been through training, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to get a focused equity counselor onboard. But that would be something that we would talk to our school board about. And our, it would start at the administration at the school, school districts with Superintendent Snell. And I know that they would be really happy to, to discuss that option. That, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, the school does have an equity call as well. And myself and Chief Lackey were on that last week. And Councilmember Burton was on there as well, along with Carter. And, and again, I'm learning a lot as well, just even from the school as I, as I get into this. So there are a lot of great resources. Sorry, Steve Hogan?
Yeah, my question would be, is following up on Annie's, but if there, if there's a student at the, at the school district that there's an unlawful act, whether it be, you know, sexual assault or any other unlawful act, do they go to the administration or do they go to the SRO that the city provides to the district? And that's probably Mitch that would answer that one.
Actually, probably just refer the person to do whatever they're most comfortable with. And so the SROs are often not in the high school building, they're around the entire district. And so I would say seek out, you know, the first staff member that the student's comfortable with and, and tell them what happened. They'll make sure that we get contacted for criminal acts.
Definitely talking about it is key, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Annie, does that answer your question?
Okay, sorry. Somewhat, I think one of the most important factors is definitely having a person whose job is specifically to deal with these kind of situations revolving around equity. I think as a student, I would have felt tremendously more comfortable had I known there was a counselor who I could directly go talk with because not all students have those relationships with their teachers. And the times I did, I didn't always feel comfortable talking to them. So definitely something to consider is a counselor specifically for the job within the high school.
And it's a great idea, and I'm definitely going to bubble that up to Superintendent Jeff Snell as well and, and pass that on. So thank you very much, Annie.
I can see that Jeff Snell is on our, in our attendees, so I think he's probably taking notes.
Beautiful. And then Ellen, did you raise your hand there as well? Sorry. Nope. All right, I will pass it back to you, Heather.
Okay, next we have Janice.
Looks like she's still on mute.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, I've got it.
Hey, Janice.
Hello, how you doing?
Good.
Nice to see everybody. I'm Janice Dzinski, and I live at 2112 Northwest Hood Drive. So the thing I wanted to raise with all of you is my husband and I were taking a walk around Round Lake on Father's Day. And when we came to the pedestrian bridge, there were two kids who were standing, you know, on the other side of the bridge in swimsuits. It wasn't even warm out, you know, in, towards the middle of the bridge. And their parents were there watching them, I assume it's their parents. And my husband and I were mortified that there were kids on that bridge. We know what happened last year. And my husband said to the parents, do you know that there was a young man who died here doing that last year? And they were not aware of that, so they thanked him. I don't know if they actually took their kids off the bridge because we continued walking on. But I think that we, as a city, are very remiss in not doing something about this. I think there should be some kind of signage, something that tells people not to jump off that bridge. It is, I, I just see it as a huge issue for our city. We know it's been a problem. And so I just wanted to raise that. I, I can't even imagine how that child's parents feel and how they would feel if they saw kids on that bridge. So, and it's both bridges, really.
Thank you, Janice. Any, anyone want to jump in there?
Yeah.
Ellen?
I will. I agree with Janice. This is one of my concerns. I know not everyone reads signs. I know that we get sign weary in addition. In the case that Janice cited, the parents were unaware that anything occurred last year. We have so many newcomers in our community and people that use the, the lake that are not from Camas. I would urge us to seriously consider at least some minimal signage to inform people because at least we'll catch those people that are rule followers and sign readers. We won't catch the people that are egging each other on. We won't catch the people that are going to do it anyway. We will catch some people, and if we can prevent any one death, it's completely worth it. That's my view. So thank you, Janice, for bringing it up.
Shannon, and then Don, and then Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm on board with that as well. I think it's very important, not only to have a sign that tells them what not to do, but the fact that someone did die there. Lots of times, that'll be a deterrent in itself, and they need to know the whole story. So I do think it's very important for us to, for the city to get something up there. I know that we can't erect things on either side, but we can do what we can do. And that's the easiest thing, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Don?
I just want to make the community that's listening aware that we do have a committee. Councilmember Burton and I sit on that committee. And we've engaged Public Works Director with that task. And then COVID came, it doesn't mean that it stopped. But with all the other demands, I presume we've got to slow down. But I agree with everything that's said. If Steve has something he'd like to offer, I would welcome that. But we are engaged as a council on that. We've reported back to the full council, I think, at least once, right, Ellen? And I just wanted the public to know that doesn't attend our meetings that we're engaged in this. And I see it as an urgent issue, particularly now that the summer months are here. So thank you.
Thank you, Don, Steve.
I, I agree with everybody. I really didn't have a comment, I was just given a thumbs up.
Yes, this, this, Janice, it has been discussed, we are going to have to figure out some solutions very quickly. And to your point as well, when it, when it comes to the safety of, of these kids, the sooner the better. So more to come on that. But thank you very much for, for bringing that up. It is a, it is a very.
Thanks for listening.
And thank you, Janice. And then Ellen, you got another?
Yeah, one thing. I think it's important for all of us to remember that we have to take responsibility for ourselves and our kids to have those conversations with our kids, no matter how big or small, that it's very easy to be somewhere with your friends and forget about someone. And all of a sudden, they're not there and they're not coming back. So having those conversations, making sure your children are strong swimmers, because when you hit the water and it's cold and you take a big breath because you're shocked, that water goes down. So it's extremely important that each one of us, as community members, take that responsibility, teach our children to swim well, have the ongoing conversations from the time they're one to the time they're 41 about swimming safely. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. All right, Heather, I'll pass it back to you.
All right, next we have Tessa.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, Tessa, how are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I am also a high school graduate this year. I live.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I live over in Benton Street neighborhood. I heard someone earlier on here talking about that. Oh my God, someone in my neighborhood. But I just want to kind of, wanted to relay back to what Annie had talked about and how we're kind of all in here because we want to talk about the eight can't wait policies and Campaign Zero and like how it relates to Camas' own use of force policy. And, you know, just give you kind of student feedback. But my question was about how we handle mental health crises because a lot of times you see, I'll just, I'll just read what I have to say. I want to be able to change this and send non-law enforcement agencies and workers, like social workers or people that have more experience in handling those situations because it causes an immensely positive change to how our cities handle mental health. This would have been all the difference when it came to saving Rayshard Brooks. I don't know if you know his story, but he was a black man that was killed because he was in the middle of a mental breakdown and they did not know how to handle his situation and care for him, and he ended up dying. And I know a lot of people say there's like mental health crisis lines and like you, there's other lines you can call, but a lot of times it's someone else calling and it's your first instinct to call 911. But when this happens, I think we need to be prepared to send in other people other than our police or like reallocate like funding for our police to have better training in that area. And I think that in general, police bear too much authority, like they have so much to take care of. You know, they're taking care of all of our people and there's just so much on their plate to do. And when that happens, you're human, you can't take care of it all. And so like Annie had said beforehand, is we need to have people that are like specific to each big like change in sector of, you know, taking care of its citizens. And here's a little stat is that people who suffer from mental illnesses are 16 times more likely to be killed in a police encounter. And that shouldn't be the case. We need to change our response to mental health crises because that should just never happen at all. Like I have no words to explain it other than that should not be happening. And I can get a little personal here. I have had this happen to me and, you know, my own mother called them on me and I was perfectly fine. I said, why did you do that? But to put it blankly, it was a horrible experience. I don't think that anyone really understands what it does until it actually happens to you. I felt ashamed, I felt embarrassed, I didn't really feel taken care of. You know, when someone comes to you, you know, loaded in their armor and like has a gun on you, it's kind of a scary experience. And I'm a middle-class white girl, so I can't really, I cannot fathom like the fear that someone else would feel outside of Camas or just someone who wasn't me inside, like in Camas. So my question is really just how can we implement new change to how we handle people going through crises like that?
Great question, Tessa, and thank you so much for sharing. I see Don's got his hand up. Don, you want to jump in?
Yes, I think there are things we can do. I would defer to Chief Lackey to talk. I believe our, our officers do engage in some level of mental train, of mental training of how to handle mentals. But let me, let me just give a comment to us all on council and to the public that's listening. In 2008, I became the police chief in Camas. And a couple of years after that, and Chief Lackey will recall this time, the state of Washington did a dramatic reduction in funding for mental health. And I remember not too long after that happening, I talked to the city administrator Lloyd Holberson about my concerns about that. And it's come to pass. The fact is, is that the state of Washington doesn't done, do a great job in having resources available to the folks that really could use that service. And it would augment then the role the police would have. So.
Yeah.
At Tessa, whether it's you or anybody, our council should probably reinforce that by putting it on our legislative agenda. But I encourage you, whether it's a candidate running for state office or the, or the folks that are holding office today, engage them. Tell them we need to provide more funding for those services. There's no question, there's a need for it, and we have a long history to prove it. And, and I think the stats that you referred to earlier, they're, they're, they're part of the outcome that's happened as a result of curtailment of services. So I encourage you to get engaged in council. Let's put that on our legislative agenda, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was like exactly the response I was kind of hoping to hear. So just to be in like support of that.
Thank you so much, Tessa, for sharing your stories as well. And, and I know that, that we just appreciate it, you know? And again, I think mental illness is a, it's a concern. And I think that as we go through this COVID, I think it's, it's, it's even going to be more concerned, you know, as we kind of continue on. So I think it's, it's an excellent conversation from the community standpoint. It's, it's very important. So thank you, thank you.
I'm curious if Chief Lackey wants to talk about the training the police force receives in that area?
Well, we receive a kind of a minimal amount of training in crisis intervention every year. But what Councilmember Chaney said is absolutely right, and I agree with Tessa. As a matter of fact, all of the chiefs and sheriffs in the state agree with Tessa. It has been on our professional organization, WASPIC's Legislative Agenda for the last couple sessions. We have been asking in the state legislature to more robustly fund mental health treatment. They use a term called community-based treatment, which is really means they kind of leave it up to the local communities around the state to deal with mental health. And when that's not done, it often falls to the organization of last resort, which is law enforcement. So the answer is in the state legislature. And it's already on the chiefs and the sheriffs legislative agenda. And we only have two or three items here that we really asked them to take a look at. So it's one of the big ones, from Spokane to Seattle to Vancouver to Camas. And if our, the council can press any buttons through the, their agenda through AWC, that's all going to help. But that is the ultimate answer, is to get people who are professionally trained to try to deal with those crises and not the police officers.
Thank you, Mitch. Anyone else?
Yes, next we have Hosanna.
Can you hear me?
We can, hello, Hosanna, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. My name is Hosanna Bai, and I live at 3530 Northwest 61st Circle. I have been living in Camas for 10 years, and I'm also another high school graduate. I have a question in regards to Campaign Zero's policy. The national average of de-escalation training for police officers is eight hours, whereas social workers undergo extensive weeks of training. How many hours will the Camas Police Department dedicate it to learning de-escalation techniques? And what practices will be enforced? I also want to say that I agree with Annie. As a person of color, I would have felt more comfortable and heard if an equity counselor was provided. Sparking dialogue within students on matters of race, sexuality, and sexual assault is needed within the Camas High School curriculum. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Hosanna. Congratulations as well on graduating, and I will pass that message on to, to Jeff Snell. Chief Lackey, in regards to the training when it comes to de-escalating situations, do you have that off the top of your hand?
No, I don't. But currently, and since last March, I mean, all statewide law enforcement training has been canceled other than a few things that you can get online. But de-escalation training is most commonly built into the defensive tactics section, session because it's more of a hands-on decision-making skill. And so as the officers are taught to slow down their reactions, do more communication, it's built into those types of trainings that actually COVID prohibits because you have to have touching contact with other people and more than a couple people in a room. So, you know, it's something that's offered, but right now it's not available.
And, and again, from a training standpoint, that's something I feel very passionate about as well. And I think it's important to give officers the resources because it is a very difficult job, especially in today's day and age. Sorry, Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, I just wanted to back up a little bit and say that I used to work as a receptionist on, at NAMI National Lines and Mental Illness Office here in Vancouver. And I also have a family member that has some mental health issues. And I can tell you that the system is inadequate. some mental health issues, and I can tell you that the system is inadequate. The mental health system is very poor, but I hear that that's true in every state. Not just Washington State, but, um, the policemen that I ran across were very supportive. Just one little, if we have time mayor. There was a, a father that came into the office one day and he was desperate. His, uh, his brother had come in and all of a sudden he had shown symptoms of bipolar and paranoia schizophrenia. And he let him stay with him in his home, but it just, he became such a they couldn't get any sleep, they couldn't get anything done, they didn't know what to do, so. The mental health system would not take him in, so the only thing they know to do was put him on the street and let the police pick him up. And then he would get the help that he needed. Now, that's a very sad case when, when a parent or a family member has to do that to get help. You know, I, I do hope that the state can do something to fund the mental health system here. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Shannon, Steve?
I, I've got some questions for, uh, both Mitch and Don Chaney. Two thousand eight was the year I heard, um, where the funding began to go down, but it seems to me that prior to that, it was Ronald Reagan with federal funding that was taking money away. So if, if we did lobby the state legislature to get help, uh, get professionals to deal with these issues instead of the police having to deal with it. How would that work? You, you know, if it's one in the morning, uh, and a call comes in for mental health. How did that work prior to two thousand eight? What would need to be in place by either the state or the federal support? That would deal with that kind of a person in that kind of a state? And how would they move that mentally ill person to the right facility in the past? What do we ask in the state legislature to do to get this off of the police department's plate?
So I think the first tie, I'll go first, Don, if you can follow up, but I think the first issue is they have to have beds, they have to have locations where they can take people and then, um, get them evaluated. And then try to get them on a treatment plan that is going to work that, for that individual. But you have to have this safe, uh, facility location in order to start, and there's just no mental health beds available. In the, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, the state mental health hospitals were much more robust. And they did have places where they could, um, to, to take people to treat people. Now, there are different models that are, you know, when you look at crisis intervention at a street level, like Portland's going to try a more, you know, responsive model where a couple of professionals will go out and try to, you know, meet with the person and, um, you know, do some triage type of treatment. But ultimately, these, the long-term success is going to be based on the individual talking to a doctor and getting a treatment program that works for their needs. You can imagine that a police officer getting even, you know, ten or fifteen hours of training a year is never going to fill that void. So yeah, as funding went away, uh, it really was left to the individual communities around the state to kind of fend for themselves.
Yeah, I'll join in now, uh, and you know, even then, police typically were the first point of contact, although as Shannon described earlier in that scenario that she described, there is a family member who brought an individual that may not have been, had to be contacted by the police had there been resources and facilities available. I, from a personal view, and this is only anecdotally, but I believe that our homeless problem is a direct correlation to the lack of support and services for it, so. Think about how many people that might get not only placed in a, in a location where they can be helped, but would be off of the street and not in having to take the officer's time or the potential risk for some escalated conflict, so. It really starts, I think, at having resources again, and, and Steve, I, I can't say that it would be totally different. I think there would be fewer contacts by the police. And I think families in crisis could go to places that had the resources so that the people didn't go back on the street. So in, in, in essence, it's a reduction in the potential conflict on the street.
Thank you, I appreciate it, you guys.
Does that help Hosanna?
Um, yes, thank you.
Oh, it's a great question, thank you for, and congratulations again. I think I did two congratulations there, so, there you go. Heather?
All right, next we have first initial K, last name looks like it's pronounced On perhaps. Hi, hi. Yeah, sorry, my name is Chris On, I live at one nine four three four Southeast Thirty First Street. Um, and I was wondering what the relationship between the Camus School District and the Police Department is right now in response, in regards to the school resource officer? And specifically, um, if someone could speak to whether the school resource officer position was implemented with specific goals in mind and whether those goals have been met since the implementation of the position.
Does anyone want to take this, or Chief Lackey, do you want to jump in?
No, that one started before me, I'll leave that to Councilperson Chaney, I think.
Come on Mitch, you know why we did it. You know, there was, there was a request and an interest by the schools, the schools for the last twenty-five years or longer have had a, just an awesome partnership. And, uh, so it started out of that partnership that we had and common interest and common purpose. It served both entities, it gave the police department somebody who could specialize in in the educational process at that level, and it also provided a more immediate response for the police officers, and I think that's the way it is today. If I'm not mistaken, Milt Dennison was the superintendent at that time that partnered with the city of Camus and, and myself, and, and I think at the time it was actually Mike Slider who was chief. I believe from the perspective of the police department during the time I was there was extremely successful, I hope Mitch sees it that way, as a matter of fact, talking to Mitch, I know that he does, I want to speak for him. I don't know if it's appropriate mayor, but I, I know that Jeff Snell is on the line, I don't know if we could click him and maybe get that perspective right away while we're in this town hall setting to see maybe from the perspective of the school, what that might be, is that possible?
Ask Heather.
Sorry Jeff.
It would have to mean Jeff would have to raise his hand, and I don't know if he wants to do that.
He did, he did raise his hand.
I, he would, thanks.
Yeah, this is Jeff here, can you guys hear, hear me okay?
We can Jeff.
Yeah, I'm just glad to hear all these recent glad graduates on the call this evening, um, I think that's awesome. Great ideas and, and good questions. So specifically, the, the question is around, um, the relationship between the, um, school district and the city, um, police department, and as, um, Councilmember Chaney said, you know, it's been a long history, um, one that's been viewed as a very positive relationship, um, from both entities. The last time we really examined the role actually came out, um, after the Marjory Stoneman shootings, um, in two thousand sixteen. And we had a number of town hall, um, type safety forum meetings, uh, where the community, um, talked about a lot of safety issues, um, but one of the things that surfaced was the school resource officer. And concerns just about if we had enough, um, support given kind of some of these extreme events that had been happening across the country, um, in which school staff are not, um, well-equipped to handle, um, and so um, at that time, there was a strong, um, I guess sentiment of support for the position again renewed. This past legislative session, there's also been some new language about relationships with school districts and city. And Chief Lackey and I have actually just been, um, exchanging emails about those policies and procedures and some training that they are wanting to implement, or I guess, uh, require school resource officers to have. Unfortunately, they didn't fund any of those training opportunities and there aren't any of them happening right now, but that's not going to stop us from looking at the policies and procedures and try to figure out what, what works best in this relationship now. It seems like there's a lot of forces at play as we think about the role of law enforcement in our community and mental health in our community and schools in our community. And so I, what Chief Lackey and, um, we were going to do, and, and I'll throw this back to you chief, was just to get together and review the policies and procedures and look at the training that's required and see if that's something that we can provide even if we don't have the state funding behind it. And so, uh, I guess, just to summary, you know, it's been a, a positive relationship where we are trying to look at it as not a, a response or a reaction as much as a proactive, um, partnership between the city around safety. Um, and it covers everything from walking to school and riding your bike to school. To unfortunately, things with drugs or alcohol and stuff that happens at high schools, um, and some of the comments earlier about you know, things like assault and things like that, where our school resource officers can provide, um, help if needed. So I will stop, since this is your forum, and throw it back, uh, to you guys.
And I'll just add, uh, Jeff, I think your student population is like six or seven thousand with staff, uh, total in all the different buildings. So as a draw of law enforcement services, really on any given weekday when school's in session, um, the schools generate a lot of various calls that are connected to law enforcement, so. Even if we didn't have SROs in the building, I can reflect back to the time early in my career. We still had a lot of time that we were up at the schools dealing with the calls related to that many people, if you get that many people in one location, they're going to generate things that, that need law enforcement services.
And Mayor, if I could finish with that, um, the one thing I noticed early on when we did it, and I think it's important today, especially today that the young students, when they're in the middle school and even in the elementary classrooms or in the elementary hallways. They get to see this person as a human being instead of somebody driving by in a police car. Or somebody out on the street arresting somebody, they get to see that they're a real person and they actually get to develop relationships, I, I think Mitch would tell you, and you can do it if you want Mitch. That the SROs are people that are, their purpose when they're not doing something, it's a task is to engage the students and, and, and the young folks is to see that a policeman is a real human being and not some kind of special robot that just does law enforcement, I think that I think that has peripheral value somewhere down the bring up road, at least I hope it does, I, I think so, thanks.
Thank you, Don. Chris, does that answer your question, or is there more to it than that?
Sorry, um, I wasn't unmuted, that does answer my question, and I was wondering if I could, uh, ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Um, just in regards to the positive relationship that's been noted between, in, like with the school resource officer program, I was wondering like what percentage of that feedback is coming from students as opposed to parents and officers? Or I guess just if, I, I don't think that that would be like something that could be, um, maybe like a number that you can provide right now, but I, I just wanted to say that a report from a research organization called The Trace states that while parents and administrators may feel like having police officers in schools improve school safety. Students feel pleased, um, and the National Association of School Psychologists has argued that armed guards increase student fear rather than making them feel safer which could harm the learning process. Um, and I, I think that my main point is not that necessarily, like I, I went to Camus High School as well and never had a problem myself with the school resource officer, but I would like to question whether there is a need for an armed officer to be present specifically, um, within the school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, and just to, to hit on, um, Jeff's point earlier, I, just with the amount of graduate kids or graduate adults that are, that are calling in, it's very exciting to see that kind of involvement, and, um, I, I think that's, that's exciting to me as we look to the future because you guys are the future, and these are great questions. All right, Heather? I'll pass it back to you.
Next we have Morgan.
Hey Morgan? Are you there Morgan?
From what I can see on my side, it looks like it works, let me give it another try and see again.
Morgan, can you hear us?
All right, well, I do believe that this Morgan is the same one that submitted an email, um, kind of right before the meeting started, so I'll go ahead and read the email that was submitted and hopefully that was the intent of why the hand was raised. Email reads, regarding the town hall meeting, my question is, what are the plans for transparency around police department data? How will demographic data around arrests, tickets be conveyed to public through comprehensive reports?
Chief Lackey, do you want to take this one?
That's all available, um, that's all public record, any data that we have that anyone can get, just contact our office.
I don't know if we can unmute Morgan, so any, any information like that, you can just reach out to us, we will give you all of that information that, and, um, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of information as well, so, sorry, Steve Hogan?
Some of that data though Mitch, has to be, um, grabbed or correlated, doesn't it, uh, before it can be sent out, it's not, it, it could be a public request. But not all of it's available at the touch of a button. It, uh, some of it has to be, it might be recorded, but it's re, not recorded in the computer system. But we can make it available.
Yeah, and each requester is really unique, so some people want to know like how many traffic accidents we've had in the area intersections and but just how many like citations have been issued, that's a pretty quick grab in, you know, give us a parameter like last year or in the last five years or something. Some data is actually available through the courts, uh, and not from the police, but citations and arrests are, are data that, that we can give, we just need to know what the parameters are.
Thank you. Morgan, I see the unmute button is on, but I'm not sure if you can talk there still?
There seems to be issues with the audio connection for Morgan, so.
So if you want to follow up with an email Morgan, if you need more specifics, um, and then maybe we can try back again, Heather?
Okay. And at this time, I'm not seeing more hands raised, so Mayor, if you'd like to refer to one of the emailed questions that you received?
I can do that, the, um, well, there was a, a lot of questions around, um, finances, um, so maybe, uh, Kathy, I guess I do see Kathy good. I guess maybe, um, Kathy, how, where are we at from a budget standpoint, um, I guess overall, um, how are we looking?
Um, the, for twenty twenty, the, it's been really interesting, I just watched, looked at, um, June, and June was that number, that month that we were really interested in because of some of our revenues are reflecting April. And April was really the first full month of the COVID, um, pandemic shutdown for across the city. And sales tax was ticking up above, um, last year, but not by a lot, but it was still ticking up, and so that's hugely positive. We all, so that's telling us that there is a lot of, um, in from, um, the deliveries as well as for all our capital projects as well as the, um, residential projects. We also had a good month in June because we building permits come through, so that's great news as well. There is an interest that we will be watching very carefully as, um, both has been reported both in New York, New York Times, it's NPR, and also on Moody's Analytics. Is that there is, they're anticipating a flight to the suburbs. And if you can work from home, you can work from home anywhere, so do you really need to live in a high-density area that might be more it, it might be more sensitive for some individuals with the coronavirus or other viruses that may come up. So we'll be watching that carefully. But right now, real retail sales seem to be strong as well, so we probably, we're going to keep because it, it, there is a chance for a second wave. And so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that, but right now, um, Camus is looking fairly well, um, I don't think that we're going to have a huge downturn. I don't think that we're going to have a huge downturn. If we do, it just might be a bump. And we have already built up our reserves in anticipation of a recession like that we saw. So.
And our reserves are around, I think, 27 to 32%, somewhere in that ballpark.
Right in that range. That's what we're giving a range right now because it just depends on what's going to happen in the next few weeks and months.
And then as well, sales taxes were actually up compared to last year as well this year, which was.
Is really incredible.
The and then maybe again, since we're talking about the money, the budget, so we're looking at now, we're looking good ending this year. Then we're planning for the next two years. Maybe again, just an overview of that process and how we're doing it differently than this year than we are and we've ever done before.
Yeah, it's really exciting to watch these interactive experiences right now because we're getting a lot of interaction with the community. Hoping to continue that into the 2122 budget cycle, which we're just kicking off right now. And we're anticipating using some interaction with making around that for the public. So going to have a couple of virtual experiences called using a tool called Balancing Act. Where we'll look at capital projects and how people feel about the capital projects that we're thinking about over the next two years. Operating decision passes and see what people think about those. So that council has some additional information going into that. And that tool is also going to be used by, we're hoping to use it a community at the high school and using it as a community with within our own organization with staff and the management team and council. And so blending all these, these certain views together will be interesting to see. And it gives council a lot of more information than we've had in the past.
So Kathy, what this is, is a new online tool that allows our community to weigh in on how they want us to spend our budget. Like we've got things we have to fund. The state says we got to fund police and fire at a certain level or we have
Right, absolutely.
But there's other costs. So for example, if the city decided we wanted to have more better improved maintenance at our parks or turn a park into a softball field or something like that. These would be the sorts of things the community could prioritize and it's a one input into the process.
Absolutely. It's a good blend of education showing, okay, what do, what does a city have control over? And what are the fixed costs, if you will, because every, from a business to a government, we have fixed costs and we have our variable costs and we have more discretionary costs. Be able to share that with the community and say, okay, here's our budget. And give us guidance as to how you would prioritize some of these items. And that in provide all the information and background, each one of them. So everybody's has the same information that across the board as to what was involved. What what the ongoing cost, if it's a one time ask, the ongoing cost of that one time ask. Or in giving a lot of more information about what does it look like, giving some visuals, giving some background as to how that's perceived. I think it'll be just, it's just something that to that that will help people frame up. And a lot of the community said the best thing that comes out of that is that people understand. You know, it is a lot more complex than we thought it was. And that's good to know because we, if the more complex something is, the more information we can get, more perspectives that we can get, the better the decision can be made.
I love the visual of it though as well. It just, it's very easy for me to understand. And then you can dive into more of the details. You can get to the line items where everything's added and then pulling back as well. And I think it's going to be a great educational tool as well. Because it's just a unique way to look at government as a whole through the numbers, you kind of, it's you approach it differently, but you can see how it all connects.
Someday it'd be nice to do it in public. I mean, because at some, this has been normally been done in an environment where we're all together like this, a town hall, where we're all together in a big room and talking about with different groups. But you know, since we can't do that, this is a nice step forward. Try part of it and get some feedback.
And then we're looking at breaking it up so that you'd have, you know, you get the council's feedback, you get the staff's feedback. We get, you know, the citizens' feedback. There's, we can go to the schools. I know Kathy is looking at as well for different groups. And it kind of just gives different perspective. I think it'll be interesting just to see, there's a, there'll be a lot of great information that comes out of it. And so I'm very much looking forward to that.
How will people find out how to participate?
We're hoping to get some PR out in the next couple of weeks because our first run at this is hopefully toward the end of July. That's what our, I really hope we can get it all pulled together by then, but.
It's just getting all that information in there, making sure that, you know, it's a, and as well as the information within this website as well, you can look at the numbers, but then there's boxes where you can get more information to help explain it. So there's, there's many different layers to it, but Kathy and the team are doing a fantastic job with it. Anything else on the budget? Anyone got any questions or comments on that?
Regarding finances, so going back to the finances of the city, you commented that, that the council and the mayor took steps to cut spending as we entered this COVID. And as a result, we're in a good state for reserves. And if we've got 27%, how many months of cash, I mean, how many months of operations can we fund where we are right now about?
We're at between four and five months if we, on the low end of that are six months. And so that is a good place to be. Now remembering that this first part of this so far with this virus pandemic, we have lost approximately about 940K that we were anticipating. And so just from our general fund, it's a little bit higher on the capital side, but we're keeping a very close eye on it and adjusting accordingly. But that 940 were because of the planning we did in the last couple of years, we were able to absorb that. And and that's not taken into account the money that we're getting from the coronavirus relief funds that the federal government is going to be providing here. And so as that comes in, that will help us as well. And we also kudos to the fire department, they received a little bit of money from HHS, which is great. And the library has received some money from, kudos to them, that from the library at the state level. And so all this money will help defray some of the costs that we've had to incur that we did not anticipate because of pandemic.
So it's like we have six months of savings.
Yeah.
Is that how to think of it? Is, and how does that compare to like Vancouver or other local cities?
For other local cities, it's been the smaller ones, it's been fairly difficult for them. And not to go into what they they are experiencing, but from what I'm hearing is that's been a little more challenging for them. They, some of them are more, have not seen the sales tax that we have been seeing. And likewise, there, they have some other challenges with property, the construction growth that we have. And so we'll see what happens. But we feel really pretty comfortable with, I was very pleased with what I saw this weekend when I was going through the numbers.
Thank you.
And then I just have these numbers, Kathy, 940, so we've lost approximately 940,000 in the general fund. But we've reduced spending by about 1.7 million. So that puts us in a good position. And then we've delayed some of the capital projects by two and a half million. So I think we're, if there is a second wave of those concerns, we're placed well. Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, that's okay. You're the mayor, you get to do that. The overall, there have been calls for us to reduce the headcount more and do various other things by certain people in the community. But one thing that's always been amazing to me about Camas is that we, we've had a philosophy since the start of the city, which goes back over 100 years. That the business, having businesses, large businesses in Camas helps because we can become a property tax city as opposed to a sales tax driven city. And when you get to the smaller cities around us, they get crushed in these type of circumstances where their sales tax falls down on them. And they have to make severe cuts to all sorts of areas. But the fact that we have focused on getting businesses in here and trying to stay on the property tax side as opposed to live and die with the sales tax side helps us. And so I, I think we're doing pretty well, as Barry just said, and you just said. It's, we're strong, we have months of reserves. And many cities, if they have two months of reserves, they feel like they've knocked it out of the ballpark. And we're into the four to six month area. I'm very, very pleased that we've done it. And thanks to the staff and everybody else that deferred the costs and moved things out. But I'm glad we still have the staff we do have. I think it's, they've been around a long time and they're talented and they're here for good reasons. And I'd hate to see us cut just to cut. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Since they have cut a little bit, because we have 16 positions right now that we've frozen. So some of those were prior, were filled before. Some of them are brand new, but just holding the line is the team, the management team has done an excellent job trying to pull, just hold it together. And reallocate people as much as possible. And then we also don't have our usual summer seasonals, which is that's been a hardship for some departments, but we're, they're doing a great, great job and appreciate all their efforts.
Copy that as well. I think everyone's done a tremendous job in holding that line. It was so important. Bonnie?
Since we're talking about finances, we did receive an email asking about what we spend on firefighters versus our police department. Kathy, would you like to answer that?
That was a little bit challenging because if you know, our fire department is really is responsible for three different jurisdictions. And so they're, they're larger because they're serving the Waschugle community, East County Fire and Rescue for EMS activity as well as our city, where our fire, our police department, even though they do extend out for mutual aid. And I'm sure Mitch and Nick can jump on on this to talk about it. But it's, to compare them is not really fair budget wise. And so just because the nature of who they serve and how many people they serve.
What percentage is the, I guess, could you give just what it is though, the numbers between Waschugle and Camas or?
Well, yes. Well, I think we talked about the fire already. We, when we talked about fire, we were, excuse me, fire up here for you. Fire, we are dealing with approximately a budget of 11.1 million. 60% of that is Camas, 40% of that roughly is Waschugle. And then if you look at the police department, we're talking about 5.9 million budgeted for 2020. So there, if you were to look at it kind of comparison wise, it's almost similar. If you were to look at, take the, the, the Camas Waschugle budget and kind of, and, and take out the Camas portion of the fire department. In the effort piece, they're probably pretty close.
And this is all on our website as well, as far as the finances go, people can
Yes.
Get all of these numbers there. It's, it's under the budget.
And we're going to have some videos where we show people how to use those tools. Because I know that you're welcome to go to them. It's just finance.cityofcamas.us. And that will get you to our budget pages. Granted, some of the information is in progress. The numbers are right, but some of the descriptions of the narratives, they're right, but they're just, it's just, it's the narratives from the last biennium, this current biennium that we're in. More to come on the new and we're in the middle of updating all that information for the next biennium. But yes, if you need help, please feel free to even email us at finance@cityofcamas.us. And we can help you through it as well.
And then just one of the things that I went through some of the numbers with Lackey as well, or Chief Lackey, as we were looking at the size of the police departments and we look at our size, community and the police department, we're probably on the lower end as well as far as the overall size of the department. All right, Heather, maybe we jump back to you and see if there's any hands up there.
Okay, it looks like Morgan raised a hand again. So let's see if we have a better opportunity with audio this time. And if not, then we do have another person on the line.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Morgan, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that to begin with. So to add to the conversation about it can't wait, this is kind of my question in the email. My main concern with the Camas Police Department is just the lack of transparency when it comes to the annual data. Data with the arrest and the number of traffic, traffic stops. Just looking at the country as a whole, we see a lot of systemic racism in that. And so I think it's important for the public to see if there is any is any like minorities that are disproportionately pulled over more or if they're arrested at higher rates or if they match the, the systems overall, just to see if there's something that we need to change as a city. So I know that they do, like I said, they do the annual reports. And so I think that race should be reported in that, in that annual report. So I just want to hear some thoughts about that.
Great question, Morgan. I think Chief Lackey, do you want to answer that as far as the reports that we have? And I know that this is something that's monitored as well at a higher level.
Well, the annual reports just designed to be kind of a snapshot of police activities. But when it comes to reporting any data sets, honestly, that report could be 500 pages. So every year when our UCRs are published by the state, which is a uniform crime report, it is a 500 page report that tries to digest data from multiple different views. And that's also a source that's a good one to go to, to get crime data for the city of Camas, which comes from the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. But it's almost easier when it comes to trying to give people data that they're looking for, just to have them ask a specific question like what set that they're looking for. So race data is captured for traffic stops and we have had that analyzed before by a crime analyst. We don't, the city doesn't actually employ a crime analyst, but we've sent our data to be analyzed. And it's right along the lines that you're looking at is there any disproportionate impacts based upon the minority groups of people stopped? So that is available, but it's more on a request basis. It's one of the handicaps of working for a small agency. You know, we're not very thick when it comes to layers of people to do tasks. And so not having a crime analyst on board, we really don't have somebody that can crunch those numbers every day and just publish reports. But most important thing is if you're interested in those, they're available and we could get those to you. All you have to do is just call us or email.
Sounds like an internship opportunity.
Morgan, does that help answer the question? Or is there more specifics around that?
Um, yeah, I think that that answered my question. I think I would just want to maybe see if that can change in the future, just because I think this is information that everybody should know in Camas and everybody should be concerned with. But I will look more into that and I appreciate the responses.
Thank you, Morgan. Anything else, Chief Lackey on that?
No, but I'll just add that when that was last reviewed in 2018, the analysts said there were no disproportionate impacts of people of color or minorities on our traffic stops or arrests. the analysts said there were no disproportionate impacts of people of color or minorities on our traffic stops or arrests.
And how often is that reviewed, Mitch?
We try to do it in association with our accreditation status. And so it's at least every three or four years, we'll send that out. Since we have to kind of beg for the service instead of pay for it, it's kind of on a favor basis by other agencies for us.
I'm wondering if Mitch could talk about the accreditation of our police department.
I think you beat Don, Ellen.
That's why I was going to let Don brag of that. It's really kind of his baby, but I'll be glad to go if he doesn't want to. Okay, I think he gave me the wave. So Camas Police Department is an accredited agency by the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. So we're pretty proud of that. And what that means is we've adopted best practices in the law enforcement industry as judged not by us, but by an outside accreditation source. So I know that Camas High School is, like many schools, I think that they're an accredited educational institution. Many colleges are, you know, at least the ones that are worth going to are accredited. And for us, we've been accredited since 2001 and it was one of Chief Chaney's goals to get us accredited. And back then, it was more rare than it is now for a small agency to have the accreditation status. But it involves us having policies that are updated, that stay current to current events. And so we're constantly flexing as things in society change to try to stay current. Our officers go through a list of trainings that are required for accreditation. And then when the WASPIC auditors come in every four years, they actually come to our department. They look in our files, they talk to our people, they look at our police reports and how we conduct business. And it's a pretty rigorous program. And so that's why we're pretty proud to actually have the, the award at the end of that process. So I believe we're on our fifth cycle now. We're coming again in 2021 for a review. And it's just something that I think that the city should feel good about on the city council. Because it does, I think, imply that there's a level of quality to the agency that we're staying current on those things that are most important for police agencies to stay current on.
Thank you, Mitch. And it's, sorry, Steve?
No, go for it, Barry. Go for it.
No, I was just saying, it's been, it's been interesting the last few weeks, really spending a lot of time with Chief Lackey and really going through a lot of these, understanding all aspects of it. And, and again, I think that we're a unique city as well. I mean, when we look at the statistics overall, you know, the use of force at .00067% and four shootings in 50 years. You know, it's, we're in somewhat of a bubble here as well. But I think that these are great conversations to have, but I like having the conversations now versus, you know, if something ever did happen. But I think that, you know, the chief has been with the department for 30 years. We have an extremely strong group of individuals. And I think we're very fortunate in many different ways, especially as we look at what's going on at a national level. And at the same time, you know, again, we want to, want to make sure that we're paying attention. And for me, it's, it's really kind of understanding all these aspects. But the more I understand, the more comfortable I feel with a lot of this stuff. But again, we're going through the process. Sorry, Steve?
One thing that this town hall and, and the last two years have really pointed out to me is that we truly are, when I first came to Camas, it was about seven, eight thousand people, seven to eight thousand people. And now we're at the range of 23,000. And I'm hearing over the months and years, the past couple of years, more and more data, more people are trying to get engaged. And yet the, the data that we can make available is a little bit cumbersome to get at because we've kind of isolated departments. And, you know, for the council, I think we need to really think about what this computer system needs to look like. What's, what information is gathered and what's available and how we can make it easy for the staff to put it together. Because hopefully the community is going to be more engaged than they are currently and keep getting more engaged as time goes on. But the data is going to need to be there so they can understand and research part of it themselves by going to the city website. So.
I agree, Steve. We need to make it as easy as possible to have all that information. And, and you know, again, transparency was the word Morgan had as well. We want to have it out there so it's easy.
Yeah, it's budget time, so we have to think about that.
Don?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make this brief. I just wanted to touch on one more point that gives me comfort and I wanted to share with the council and the public. Number one, if I'm not mistaken, and Mitch can correct this, Camas is one of only two law enforcement agencies in Clark County that are currently accredited. Number two, which gives me the most comfort is when we went through our first accreditation, I think Mitch was the sergeant at the time, and he was our accreditation manager. And quite frankly, if you give credibility to accreditation, ironically, I say that, Mitch knew it better than anybody in that department because he was our manager at the time, having to put all of the details of this thing together. So credit to Mitch. He's today our chief. And so if it's going to be right, it's going to be Mitch Lackey that'll make it right. So the public want to, publicly want to thank Mitch for, for being solid on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Heather, I'm going to bring it back to you, see if there's any hands up.
All right, next we have, I believe it might be Navea.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Can.
Hi, my name is Navea Fisher and I live at 2132 Northeast 38th Circle. I've lived in Camas for five years and I just recently graduated from Camas High School.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, what I wanted to talk today, talk about today is as a student at Camas High School, there has always been news of sexual assault in the community. Many girls in our community feel scared to come forward with their experiences of sexual assault because it is very rarely talked about. Sex in general is a culturally taboo topic, but sexual assault is talked about even less. I believe it would be extremely beneficial to address the community about consent and sexual assault in order to prevent situations where girls don't understand what is happening to them. What is happening to them is wrong because they haven't been told. All too often, a girl's first sexual experience is because of assault and they don't understand what, that what happened to them was wrong because we don't learn about specifics of consent and sexual assault in school. In my opinion, education is always the first step to prevent any serious issue and sexual assault is no different. Which comes to my question. So my question is that if, can we work towards creating better consent and sexual assault curriculum in the Camas High School health class? And also bringing that, I know the health class is just for freshmen as of now, but if we could also bridge out with consent and sexual assault curriculum to older grades as well?
Thank you, Navea. Again, it breaks my heart that this is, you know, that this, this, this goes on and happens. But it is something that needs to be discussed. I think education is a key component of that as well and ensuring that people understand both sides along these lines. I don't know if Jeff Snell is still on the line or again, I'll use Bonnie or Ellen. I don't know if you guys have any insight there as well as specifically around the school or around the, I don't know too much about what the education process is. I do have a daughter that's going into freshman year in college though, so it is something that is, it's top of mind as well. And I see Jeff, you've jumped on there?
Yeah, I'm back, you guys. It's, our sexual health curriculum is something that we have over the last several years continued to try to review. And just like Mayor talked about, keeping up with the policies and procedures and Chief Lackey talked about evolving on law enforcement side, we want to continue to evolve with the curriculum that we offer our students. And a student articulated a great concern that we have and so expanding students' experience with understanding consent and those types of issues are things that we have been exploring and will continue to explore to try to give more opportunities for students.
Thank you, Jeff. Navea, anything else or is that helpful?
Yeah, that was extremely helpful. Thank you for answering my question. I just really want to stress that this is really important because it happens to girls every year at, at Camas High School. So.
Thank you so much. And thank you for sharing that. And Bonnie and Dan Ellen?
I'd just like to, to thank Navea and all the, all the girls, all the graduates that have voiced their, their concerns tonight. This is nothing new, but as, as adults, as parents, as moms, as, as a girl, we need to support each other and give our girls the words to stop sexual assault and the strength in order to say no and to tell, say something, get the help, get, get support. It's the only way we're going to, to make an effort to make it to stop.
And as a parent of boys, we need to make sure we educate that no means no. And then we, we make sure that they're educated to be empathetic, compassionate and kind. So they can make sure in their culture of males, this is stopped, right? This is stopped.
Dork's in the home. Yep. Anyone else want to jump in or any comments on that?
Mayor, we have a few more people and about 20 minutes left.
All right.
So next we're going to go to Carrie.
Hello?
Carrie, hey Carrie.
Hello. I just want, I'm good. How are you?
Good, good, good.
I just wanted to say a thank you on behalf of downtown Camas businesses. There's been a lot that's been done by the city to help our downtown businesses and I haven't heard it mentioned yet except for the flower baskets. So I wanted to add a little bit more on there because I want everyone to know what's been happening. And the support local and save, I know that's been spoken about before, but that was huge for our businesses. And it showed a collaboration of the city and the community and the businesses. And I think it really was a key thing that helped our businesses do so well. So thank you so much for that. Thank you Kathy for all your work that you did on that because I know that was a lot of work. And to have it be so successful, that was, that was just really meaningful and just our greatest gratitude. But also doing the business Zoom calls that you did, creating a business email specifically for businesses in Camas to be able to connect with the city directly. It shows how much you care about what their needs are and what their input is. So thank you so much for that. Working hard with the different phases, doing curbside pickup signage and figuring out how that best works. Working with restaurants for increased outdoor dining, that's huge as well. And I know that is greatly appreciated. And I know there may be some shifts that go on as we go on, but I've heard only good things about that. And the watering the flower baskets, deciding to, to do that has been, has touched my heart for sure. But as Deanna said earlier, it is, it's so important for our town. It's important for our community. It's important for tourism. It's important for our merchants to know that their town is still thriving and believes in them. So thank you so much for choosing to do that. We pay attention and we notice that and we really, really, really do appreciate it. And then last but not least, thank you to Steve Wall for helping figure out some innovative ways that we can get some picnic tables either into downtown or into Crown Park so that for people who do want to do takeout and want some extra space, being able to provide that. So a lot of innovation has happened, a lot of creativity, lots of heart, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Thank you for everything that you do. And those calls have been probably the most fun calls for me. It's been great kind of connecting with a lot of the businesses and the energy and it is, we're, we're just very fortunate, I think. And again, the downtown is such a, it's the heartbeat of the city to a certain extent. So it's, 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 it's nice seeing it kind of coming up and going again. Anyone else want to jump in there or, Melissa, was that a hand up? No?
Okay, we have, we have two call, or two more hands raised and then that's probably going to just about wrap up our time for tonight.
All right.
So Karen? Let's see if we can get connected to her. Karen, you should see something that should ask you to unmute. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and re-pause you or re-mute you now for, oh, maybe there we go.
Are you there, Karen? She was due for a second.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and go to the next one, which is Scott. And we'll see if maybe we can reconnect with Karen before we run out of time.
I'll be quick. This is Scott McLeeny, 4227 North Agent Loop here at Camas. Kind of want to start out, start out on a down and then I'll, I'll end on a positive. Navea, if you're still on the line, I want to thank you for what you said. I think it's very important and reiterated that this has been a lot of time. Jeff Snell, the response you gave, I would wish it would have been a little more, a little more meat on it. I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate what you said, that you're analyzing. But you know, I wish, I wish you would have said a little more than we're analyzing. I mean, I get it. I get it. Things through a process, but I was expecting a little more than that. I, I hope the next time something like this comes up. We have daughters similar to the mayor, a daughter that's going to be a freshman at Camas High School. This is very important to us. So anyway, that's my down. Now, the positive is that this afternoon, my wife and I took the girls to friends of Wrath. We went to Mesa with the Caps Taps with the beer of time. Then we ended up deserting Topper, which was fabulous. We were sitting at Captain Tap's outside and watching cars go by and we looked at each other and we said, wouldn't it be great if Fourth Avenue was people only? People, you know, there are all these cars, some of them were really loud and some of them were smelly. And I wonder if the city's ever considered just blocking it up permanently? And maybe the north and south, Urch, Cedar, Dallas, you know, you can go back and forth, but why not shut these off? Shut Fourth Avenue off to, there were a ton of people riding bikes, a ton of people walking. I don't know if that's ever been considered, but we thought, what an amazing thing that would be to have people walking and no cars. This could have open space. It could be, two trucks or carts or what have you. Just, and I know other, other cities have done this and it's been very, anyway, I don't know if you've ever considered that, but that would be amazing.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, we have considered. And I'll, I'll open up to Bonnie and Ellen and Shannon as well. This was discussed on those calls that we did that Carrie was referencing with the Downtown Business Association and, or with the businesses, sorry, downtown. And one of the key things that we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have an adverse effect on businesses. So we have some businesses there that would have an adverse effect as far as their ability to, to pick up or specifically the nature of their business. So we did, we discussed it, but overall we felt that we could positively affect some of these smaller businesses without having an impact negatively on the, on, on the overall aspect of it. It can get a little bit challenging. You know, so I think from a short term standpoint, that's what we're looking at. But I guess Ellen and Shannon or Bonnie, did you want to jump in maybe or touching that?
Sure, I'll take that. Well, as Mayor said, we did have, I think we've had four of those business meetings. And we did poll the businesses, the ones that were online. I think at one point we had 24 businesses, but at the time that we polled, maybe there were like 12 of 15. But there were quite a few that did not want to see fourth closed off. They were worried about people getting to their business. They have people in, that can't walk. The chiropractic place is, is a good example. They wouldn't be able to walk from the parking lot that they would have to park in. So we did ask that question and pretty resoundly said no. But that's not to say that sometime in the future, if we ever do a sub- But that's not to say that sometime in the future, if we ever do a sub-area plan for the downtown, that we could take that into consideration.
We, we even looked at getting golf carts for a brief period of time. If we did close it down to be able to help facilitate that and, and the chief was looking at the, you know, what the options were there. So, um, but I think these are great conversations to have. And I think it was a great format to kind of discuss it. And I think it's, it's nice to be able to discuss this and get everyone's perspective on it. Um, and thank you for sharing that one, Scott. Um, Ellen, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I, it was, it was really interesting because the city had prepared a proposal to actually temporarily close Fourth Avenue for a couple of blocks. And then when we listened to our merchants and doctors, we heard pretty resounding, please don't do this. Our clients need to be able to get to our offices, they need to be able to haul their packages. We really want the close parking, that's something that we hear all the time. And so city listened and instead our planning group and our public works group worked really closely with individual businesses to put together some special spots for them to drive business, to make sure people feel safe and to get people downtown in a safe way.
Steve?
Did you guys in your conversations, um, talk about the possibility of doing, uh, having bollards that, uh, could be taken in and out, like, um, uh, you know, along the edges of Birch and Cedar and, uh, Dallas or whatever on Saturday and Sunday, um, instead of Monday through Friday? Um, in other words, the parking's going to be a hassle. But on the weekends, the, uh, the type of area it could be changed where you put the bollards in. Did you guys go through that or did that not come up during those?
I think there was challenges around the resources of actually doing that and then how soon we'd have to clear it out as far as not having cores there. Uh, and, you know, there was some just complications overall as we're looking at, you know, operating with what we're operating currently. So, I mean, I think these are good conversations to continue on, especially as we get past this, you know, COVID. Thank you. Okay. Um, Heather, were we able to get back to, was it Karen?
Uh, I don't see that she raised her hand again, so, and we're about seven minutes out from our planned end time of eight P M.
Um, wonderful, so I think that we will, there was some, the, or the questions that were emailed that we didn't get to, we will respond to those ones, um, we'll get the answers out to those individuals. And, um, this was, I mean, this was, um, this was our first one, but thank you everyone for jumping on. Thank you for attending, I think these are helpful, I think these going forward will be, um, a, it's just a resource for maybe to kind of explain anything. And if there's more follow-up questions, um, you know, all of our information is on the website as well. Um, and administration@cityofcamus.us, is that right?
Correct.
All right, um, is another resource as well. So, um, thank you everyone for attending, thank you council members for attending, staff, thank you for, for jumping on as well. Really appreciate it and, um, I look forward to seeing you all soon, thank you.
Have a good Fourth of July.
Bye.
Be safe.